Township of Howell zoning board of adjustment, Monday, December 19th, 2022. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township zoning board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following. First, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 14th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9 Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider and reaching a decision and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens up the hearing for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you could press star nine to raise your lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Eileen. Item two, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Moretti.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Stanton is absent. Mr. Rubel is absent. Mr. Parisi.
Here.
And Chairman Sayah.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Eileen. May you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as it is.
Thank you. Okay, Andy, may we swear in the zoning board professionals, please?
Yes, Jen, Charlie. Oh, there he is. Okay, sorry. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
I do. Your professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Eileen, do we have any approval of minutes?
No minutes to approve tonight.
Any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Eileen, do we have any correspondence?
I have two things for correspondence tonight. At the end of the meeting, the board will have to discuss the end of year resolution. So I'll remind you at the end of the meeting. And also case number BA 2110, Route 9 Howell LLC will be carried to January 9th, 2023 for scheduling purposes only with no further notice.
And Eileen, we also have the bylaws to discuss as well.
Yes, you're right, the bylaws as well.
Okay, so for anyone that's out there joining us on case number BA 21-10, which is the Route 9 Howell LLC, this application is being carried to January 9th, 2023 with no further notice. It will not be heard tonight. Thank you, Eileen. Okay, next on the agenda is resolutions. So this is case number BA 20 Tac 107 Sierra Papa 366 Ramtown Greenville Road. The resolution granting preliminary and final major site plan. Eligible voters Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, and Rubel. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve.
Hughes.
A second.
Second on Mertens. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
And Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. So then we have case number BA 22-19 Christopher Marino looking for a bulk variance. The application of Christopher Marino as applicant and owner seeking as applicant and owner of 30 Honeysuckle Way, Block 35.70, Lot 54, seeking bulk variance approval to construct a swimming pool and associated concrete walkway slash patio and retaining wall within the required year rear yard setback. Exploration, March 11th, 2023. All right, who do we have representing?
Jillian McClear will be representing the applicant.
Can we get that person?
Yes.
Wrote in?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Jillian McClear here from King Kittredge Jackson McQueenian Wells on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Christopher Marino. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. So, um, tonight you're going to present to us, and how many professionals do you have?
Yes, sir. We have one professional tonight. Mr. Martin Miller is our professional engineer, and Mr. Marino is also here joining us tonight in the audience.
When you say in the audience, Christopher Marino, the applicant?
Yes.
And will he be testifying?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, uh, that, uh, unless the board happens to have any questions for him, I'm, I'll only be calling Mr. Miller as my witness.
Okay, well, you know, if you wouldn't mind.
He's already in the applicant. He's already in the meeting.
Yes. If you wouldn't mind, Ms. McClear, I'd like to have both Mr. Miller and Mr. Marino sworn in. Is that okay?
Of course, no problem.
All right, Mr. Bear. Well, first, we got to get Ms. Martin Miller, uh, video up and running here.
Mr. Miller, are you coming on so we could see and hear you?
There he is. Okay, Mr. Miller, all you need to do is unmute yourself. And you as well, Mr. Marino.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Miller and Mr. Marino, please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do. I do. I do.
Mr. Miller, please, uh, state your name and spell your last.
My name is Martin Miller. Uh, spelled M.I.L.L.E.R.
And Mr. Marino, the same, please.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Just state your name and spell your last.
Oh, sure. Chris Marino, last name M.A.R.I.N.O.
The witnesses are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. McClear, before Mr. Miller testifies, can we have a review of his credentials, please?
Of course. Uh, Mr. Miller, can you please advise the board of your background, education, and experience?
Uh, I'm a graduate from, uh, North College of Engineering. I've been practicing engineering for over 30, 40 years, and, uh, I'm also a licensed surveyor and a planner. I've been doing, like I said, doing this over, uh, 30 years, and, uh, I've been before this board any number of times 20 years ago. Uh, one of the things I did here was, uh, Shore Oaks Golf Course and, uh, a number of other projects in Howell Township.
Okay, well, we accept your credentials, Mr. Miller, as the engineer, of course, tonight.
Can I just ask, Mr. Chairman, you didn't say it, but you're a licensed professional engineer as well, sir?
Licensed engineer, surveyor, and planner.
Okay, great. Nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. And Ms. McClear, uh, Mr. Miller is representing as the planner or an engineer?
As an engineer, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Then you may proceed, please.
Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to just give a brief opening statement. Uh, we're here tonight seeking bulk variance relief for the installation of an ingrown pool at property known as 30 Honeysuckle Way in Howell. And, um, Mr. Marino, uh, has lived in this home since, uh, around the year 2013 with his wife and his two children. He and his wife are seeking to install this pool to provide a fun summertime activity for their children uh, and in an effort to make their backyard more enjoyable. And we're here tonight before the board because we do need some bulk variance relief for the pool itself, which Mr. Miller will get into uh, in more detail shortly. In filing our application, we also realized that there are a few existing non-conformities at the site that the Marinos, uh, inherited from the prior property owner, namely, having to do with the fence at the property and the backyard shed uh, that we are also seeking to approve, uh, here tonight. Uh, Mr. Miller will be getting into that in more detail shortly. And before I do call Mr. Miller as my witness, I'd like to go over just a quick matter of housekeeping. I have a slideshow with me tonight, um, of, uh, it's essentially comprised of the plans, the review letters, uh, and a few photographs of Google Earth images of the front of the home for easy reference as Mr. Miller goes through his testimony. Um, we, we didn't realize that we had to submit this within 48, uh, 48 hours before the hearing. Um, so I would request that we be allowed to use the PowerPoint. It really, the only thing that hasn't been submitted are a couple of photographs, as I mentioned, of the yard itself. Um, so I would request that we use this tonight pursuant to 40:55D10B, which states that the applicant may produce documents, records, or testimony at the hearing to substantiate or supplement the previously filed documents.
Mr. Bear?
Mr. Chairman, on this kind of application, I have no issue with the board seeing, uh, the exhibits Ms. McClear wants to show.
Very well. Now, is Ms. McClear going to put the exhibits up on the screen, or are we going to share it with our professionals and have Mr. Cunliffe or put it up?
Or Mr. Miller, I guess. Who's going to do it, Jillian?
Um, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to share my screen. I have the, the photographs ready to go at my end.
Charlie, we're good?
Yeah, I think that's fine, as long as it's been submitted to Eileen. I think that's, that's fine.
Eileen, you have them?
I have the PowerPoint she sent to me today, though, not 48 hours beforehand.
Okay. All right, so then, Ms. McClear, you're going to be speaking, but you're going to be putting your screen up on and sharing it, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, so with that being said, I'd like to call Mr. Miller as my witness. And, um, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Bear with me for one second. Mr. Chair, do you see my, uh, screen share?
I see your screen.
Thank you. Uh, so, Mr. Miller, can you please explain to the board the variances that we're seeking here tonight?
Uh, we're looking for, uh, variance for the, uh, rear yard setback and the, uh, and, uh, for, for, for the pool and a, and a rear yard for the, for the wall. And we're looking to, uh, get relief for both the front and the rear uh, fences that were, were there before Mr. or when, when Mr. Marino bought the property, the fences, fences were already there.
And, Mr. Miller, the, uh, the plan that's up on my screen right now, um, can you confirm that, uh, this is your plot plan?
This is the plot plan submitted for the application for the pool, yes.
Thank you. Um, and I'd like to just, uh, quickly go through the variances, um, variance by variance. So, um, can, can you speak to the board first about, um, the retaining wall setback and the swimming pool and walkway setback variances that we're looking for?
The swi- the swimming pool was, uh, well, the variance that we're looking for is the proposed, um, rear yard requirement is 10 foot to pool water, and we have 6.3. And the, uh, for the wall, we are 3.4 from the rear property line, whereas ordinance calls for five. The reason for that is, is that the pool is 12 feet away from the, from the house. As one of the suggestions for the construction of the pool, uh, they look, the township looks to try to keep 12 feet away from the house. We put that in 12 feet away, and we put a, uh, what we call is a deck drain between the house and the swimming pool to be able to collect the water both from the house and from the pool and direct it towards the front of the property.
Can I just interject? I don't think you're 100% accurate in your depiction of what's required. The retaining wall needs to be five feet from the property line. The walkway needs to be 10 feet from the property line. So your walkway, your walkway is, uh, 3.4 and the edge of the water is 6.3, but the requirement for both is 10, not 5.
Yes.
Jen? Yeah.
Before we proceed, um, what's the zoning on this?
Um, R3.
And this lot, what's the size?
It's like 11,000 and 11,004 plus or minus, and they need 15,000 or 15,000. It's undersized, but that's an existing condition. That's not being exacerbated by the application.
Yeah, this looks to probably have been created by subdivision with the clustering provisions.
Yeah.
So that's how it wound up undersized.
I mean, I'm not 100% sure how it wound up undersized, but it's existed in this condition, uh, for a long time. And it's not, you know, like, the lot number is not a .01 or a .02, which would tell me that it was subdivided from its initial state. It's Lot 54, so this tells me that this lot was created by subdivision at some point as is.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, Mr. Chair, I could probably rip through this a little quicker if, if you like, or else we can go through the PowerPoint. It's up to you.
Jen, go ahead.
So, okay, so there's a, right, there's a couple of things. Um, you know, as we said, the lot is undersized, which is an existing condition, so we take no exception to that. They need relief for the location of the retaining wall. Five feet's required. 2.2 feet is what it is off the property line. Um, the, the outside edge of the, the walkway, as we said, is 3.4, and the water is 6.3, where 10 feet is required, and they need relief for the fence, which is a six-foot-high solid vinyl fence um, located within the front setback where four foot, 50% open is required. Um, quite honestly, I don't take exception to any of the relief that's being asked, and, and you know, I'm sure that as we go forward quickly, we can get through the proofs. The one thing I will say is I understand that they inherited the site with the fence as is, but that property in the back is green acres, and that fence has to move. Because the town is not going to be put in a position of coming, going forward for a diversion because of fences there. We've had that happen on other applications where there was a, a swing set and an irrigation system. Um, Green Acres came down on us pretty hard, and that's been a hard and fast fall, so that fence is going to have to move onto your property. Um, it cannot remain on township open space. But the balance of it, even the shed that's there, it's two and a half or three feet at one end, and like a little bit more than two at the other, um, which I think five feet is required. Uh, I don't take exception to that either, but the one thing I do think needs to be reconciled on the property is that fence has to move.
If I may, I did explain this, uh, to Mr. Marino when we were going over this, and he understands that, uh, that, that the township really has no option about the fence and that it's going to get replaced against the rear property line.
Yeah. I, I, and then I would have no problem, and I don't even have a problem, you know, if it's right on the property line, but it just has to be out of that township open space, because otherwise it's going to have an issue.
Eric, can I ask you a quick question? We're talking about a fence across the back of the property, just to clarify.
Yeah, it's off their property. It's on township property. It extends a little bit off into the back.
Yeah, we had a couple of those, uh, in the last year. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Hughes, on the plan that's shown, the right-hand side of the screen is, is the rear of the property line. There's like a brown line that runs north-south. Uh, about eight feet, nine feet west of that, that's the rear property line, so that red fence to the east of that is on the township, uh, township open space lot. And then I just want to also make a note about the shed, uh, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Aguirre, uh, for residential sheds that are under, I think it's 120 square feet, less than eight feet in height. If they're just for residential storage, they can actually have a zero-foot setback. So if, as long as that's something the applicant isn't using it for, you know, uh, for the pool equipment or anything like that, or run a business or something out of it, then, uh, potentially no variance relief is required for it.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Thank you, Charlie.
And, and I'll just try to sum it up real quick, Mr. Sayah, with some engineering comments. So Jen hit on the, the items that, uh, were the main ones in my letter. I just want to point out, the applicant does have a note regarding any pool backwash. It is directed towards the right-of-way. That's something the board typically requires you to do that or toward dry well. On note, there is a drain, uh, a storm drain in front of the applicant's driveway, so, uh, it's not running thousands of feet down a curb line to get into a storm drain, so I think that's, that's a good thing. Um, I had a comment about the retaining wall grading, and this is really just for the applicant's benefit. If you look to the left-hand side of the screen here, the ground of the township open space lot is above their pool grade, so they may want to do some kind of swell grading with the limited space they have, just to make sure that that's not cascading onto their sidewalk into the pool. Uh, just something for the applicant to consider. Um, uh, did I have anything else there? Uh, as far as building coverage and impervious coverage, this is R3. Doesn't have any limits on that in the, uh, township code, so really, there's no restrictions on impervious or building coverage. and I'll just note for the board's reference to the fence that's in the front yard area, so that's on the upper left-hand corner of the screen. Uh, fences that are, that are within the front yard setback, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, have to be less than three feet in height and 50% open. This is a solid six-foot-high vinyl fence. Uh, in this zone on internal streets, the, the front yard setback requirement is 25 feet, which I believe the dwelling is at 25 and 23 feet.
It's in the front, uh, yard, Charlie.
It's the front yard. It's not just a setback?
Correct. So, uh, no, uh, no fencing taller than four feet, 50% open, uh, in the front yard.
Gotcha. Yeah, so looking at areas, it looks has, like it has existed for some time. Now, whether it got permits or anything when it was put in, uh, I don't know. But, um, you know, I'll let the applicant provide testimony around and how long it's been there. You know, whether it matches fencing on adjacent properties, you know, whether relocating it would cause like a visual, um, you know, discontinuity, and whether or not it would like take up usable space in the effective side yard.
I would be glad to address that when it comes to.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
I would say we're there.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we could very briefly go over the, um, the, the fencing that was just raised. Uh, I could do that with Mr. Miller, if I may?
Please.
Okay, I'm just going to flip to, these are, um, Google Earth, uh, type aerial, um, street views of the property and the fencing question. Mr. Miller, can you speak to, um, you know, the, the current location of the fence? Um, oh, and, and by the way, for the record, I did do an Oprah request, uh, in, in anticipation of tonight, I could not find a permit that was ever obtained for the fence. Uh, Mr. Marino, the applicant bought the home and the fence was there when, when the home was, when he bought the home. With that being said, Mr. Miller, can you please provide some, uh, testimony regarding the fence?
Well, it is a six-foot PVC fence. Uh, it runs from the front corner of the house towards the street and then runs along parallel to the street, and it matches up to the adjacent neighbor's fence, which is also a six-foot PVC fence. The neighbor's fence was, I would assume was put there by permit because the fence is right up against a swimming pool right at the, uh, opposite, on the other side of the, of their fence. Shown in this picture there, you can see that the neighbor's fence has the lattice-type part and across the top. And, uh, and on the other, you have another picture shows the, the, uh, pool.
Uh, right here, Mr. Miller.
Yeah. See, you can see the lattice fence and their swimming pool comes pretty close to the, to that fence, so the object, the object to, uh, when they, uh, the previous owner put the fence in, he matched it up to the, uh, to the swimming pool fence, so it blends in with the, with the neighborhood. I think, I think that if we moved the fence back, it would, it would show, um, it would, we would move it back, would have to go back towards the shed and into those bushes. I think it would, uh, uh, it would not be as appealing as it, as it's shown right now. Uh, you know, that's, that, that'll be a decision that the, uh, that the board will have to make, but I think it's in a reasonably good position right now.
And, Mr. Miller, in your opinion, the fence in its current location, is that resulting in any detriment to any of the adjacent properties, uh, or the neighborhood?
No, Doug, Doug, as a matter of fact, it blends and it makes, it makes it look like it belongs to, to, uh, together with the adjacent property.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, could I ask, is there any Google Earth shot that we can see this from above? Because it may be a little easier for us to, uh, see what's happening here.
Well, there it is there right now.
Okay.
Yes, if, if everyone can see my pointer, this is the fencing question, uh, which lines up with the neighbor's fence right here.
Okay. But there was a fence that we were going to remove because, uh, the township is going to require that because of the.
That's in the back.
Okay.
That big open spot, space lot that's on our Rossi, so that has to move out of there, yeah.
Okay, but there is a fence there now, because, okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
You're, you're saying that if the fence was within the, the setback requirements, that little angle wouldn't have been there. It would have been straight.
Right.
That little, yeah.
It would, it would be closer to that, yes.
Gotcha. Yeah, Mr. Sayah, I, I have the, the Google aerial map up on my computer, and I can see exactly what, you know, our board professionals and what the applicant's engineer is saying, how it, it appears that the side yard fence kind of sisters up and marries up with the applicant's front yard fence, so that it creates a, you know, one visual, like contiguous fencing. I, I totally understand what, what they're saying and how it looks, you know, uh, in real time.
Thank you.
Also, it, it, it enables them to have more of a usable yard, honestly.
Yeah.
You know, because it's pretty tight in the back and so this enables them to have some yard space.
Well, Jen, you know, fellow board members, you know, this is. The type of application that we get every once in a while, that just. You know, continues to hurt me in how we didn't have the foresight when we did clustering. On our, in our three zones. And what we did is we limited the fifteen thousand square foot property. In, 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 with the option of clustering and then donating open space and so forth, therefore. Making, putting a hardship on the homeowners to try to make usable of their property. And, you know, this is um, not the first one and I'm sure this won't be the last.
The, the other issue, and I, and I think Mr. Miller touched on it earlier, is that because it lines up with the neighbor's fence. I don't see the detriment to the zone planner zoning ordinance or the adjacent properties. And the only concern that I typically would have in the event that you have a higher solid fence in the front. Is, you know, if it impedes like visual coming out of the driveway and, and you're. The, the site triangles and the safety of, of coming out of the driveway. And as you can see from this aerial. It's very clear the driveway is actually on the opposite side of the house and there's more than enough space. Um, for someone pulling out of the driveway to be able to see both directions. So the fence in this location does not impede that. So I would agree with Mr. Miller's testimony that there really is no negative impact on allowing the fence to remain in its current location.
You know, Jen, it, it's also, and. You know, a, a deterrent for running motorbike and stuff right through the back into that open space.
That's a very good point. I never really thought about that, to be honest.
Yep. Yep. And we're trying to clamp down on that, as you know.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. McClair.
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, i- if I may, I, I think we've pretty much covered everything, but I'm, I'm just going to ask Mr. Miller for the record. Just uh, one or two more brief uh, questions, just having to do with the C one and C two criteria for the uh, pool variances. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Miller. Um, just, just very briefly, can you um, please describe for the board the necessity in your opinion of proposing the pool in this particular location? Taking into consideration the locating of the existing home.
Well, we placed, like, like I uh, indicated in the, in this initial testimony is. We placed the pool in the back, in the backyard, so it comes from the, if you come from the back of the house. You go right, right in, into the patio area for the pool. Uh, just so happens that there's not enough distance between the house and the rear property line to. Uh, meet the ordinance in it. And so we kind of uh, uh, moved the, the pool around to. Do the best fit, so it could be established where, where we show.
And does the proposed location promote the safety of pool users and people in the yard?
Definitely, most definitely.
And in your opinion, Mr. Miller, are there any detriments to surrounding properties? Um, or, you know, or the plan due to the proposed location of this pool?
I, I don't, I don't see any, any detriment to any adjacent properties. We have installed deck drains on either side of the pool. And we're showing swell areas with, to direct the water from the. Um, deck drains towards the front of the property on either side of the pool.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Those were the questions I had of Mr. Miller about those variances.
Okay, did we want to, board members, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Miller or Mr. Moreno?
None for me, Mr. Chairman.
No, sir.
I'm good.
Mr. Chad, one question.
I'm good.
With the pool being as close to the house as it is, do they have any intention of enclosing it with a lanai or anything like that? And, and what would be the, you know, restrictions on doing something like that?
I think that's a question for Mr. Moreno.
Uh, we have no intention on enclosing the pool at all now.
Okay. So, and, and just to add to that point, Mr. Sayah, if, if they do put in a lot, lanai and it's connected to the structure with like a common roof or something like that. That would become part of the principal structure and then would require variance relief. So just be aware of that if there is any intent to do it in the future. And then just some words of advice, you know, we see a lot of these through the years, um, where an applicant comes and gets the variances, does everything right. And then a pool contractor comes in and tries to upsell you on extra concrete and things like that. Uh, we've had, have somewhere on similar applications where fences have been into township open spade slots. The pool contractor didn't get a survey layout for the correct property line and went and put in a pool off the fence line. So just make sure you stress that to whoever ends up doing this work for you. You know, I would recommend resetting the fence on the property line before you do any of the work, so you know where the property line is. And then if they try to upsell you on concrete, just be aware, you're getting a variance for what's shown on the plan now. If anything goes northerly into the side yard and it's within ten feet of that property line, that requires variance relief. If the pool equipment ends up changing location, it's conforming right now, it's got to be ten feet off the property line. Um, like I said, we just want to avoid you having to come back to the board because the board is going to require you. Once all this stuff is built, you're going to have to get an as-built survey and submit it to the engineering department for your closeout of all your permits. I can't tell you how many we have, at least one or two a year, where people have to come back because their contractor didn't build it per the plan. So just, just want to, you know, words of wisdom for you.
Let me just indicate that we are the contracting firm for this and I will, I will have them put. The construct, at least the construction fence across the property line, so that they will know where they are at all times.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and, and Mr. Chairman, if I may, I apologize. I, I just have one other quick question on, on the um. Subject of the shed. I think Ms. Beam touched on this earlier. Um, Mr. Miller, can you just confirm whether or not the shed? Uh, needs the variance relief. I, I believe if it's eight feet or higher, it does and a hundred and twenty. Uh, feet in area, just for the record.
I, I measured the fence, or I measured the, the shed. The shed is eight feet. So there's, there's no, um.
What's this, you know what the square footage is?
Uh, I didn't measure the square footage of the shed, but I, I think was, was ten by twelve.
Okay. And you use it for typical residential storage, right?
Yeah, we just have like bicycles in there. Um, that, that's really it.
Okay, thank you.
So, so uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, to the extent that variances are required, we are seeking those tonight for the shed. Um. Although I, I guess um, uh, it's right at the cusp there, so.
Based on what Charlie described earlier, it would, it would be able to be put zero feet, so I don't think it needs relief.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Beam. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Those were all the questions I had of Mr. Miller.
Very good. So board members, once again, any questions for the applicant or Mr. Miller?
No, okay.
I'm good. None here. All right, then I suggest we open this up, do we, to, to public?
Okay, I'll make a motion to open to public, Mr. Sheriff.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Can you, thank you. I was just going to ask you to un, unshare.
Okay, great. So Eileen, can you open it up to public? I don't know if there's anyone out there, but we certainly want to give them an opportunity.
The meeting will be now open to the public. If you are calling in, you could press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Mr. Chair, you have your hand raised?
No.
Did you do?
Well, I gotta lower that, okay.
All right, there you go.
All right, thank you.
No one from the public is raising their hand.
All right, let's give them a chance. No one's calling in?
Motion to close, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are close to public. So, we get to this point where it's what's the pleasure of the board, right? Charlie and Jen, you don't have anything to add, do you?
Nothing further.
Nothing from me.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you just may want to ask, make, ensure the applicant has nothing else or, to what, close or, you know, any closing statement or anything like that.
Well, she already did, but I'll, we'll ask her again. Ms. McClair, do you have any final comments? Closing for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that, that concludes our case. Uh, we thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, board members, what, how do you see this one?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna go ahead to make a motion to approve this with all the stuff that we talked about. And uh, the fence in the front yard and, and with the applicant moving the fence out of the, out of the, the property in the back. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Mr. Hughes, do we have a second? Okay, Roscoe and Moretti.
You both have seconds.
I think Jose was by half a second.
Sorry, Ken.
Today's my last day though.
Ah, Jim. All right, Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
For the record, you know, these undersized R three lots are still going to be problematic. We appreciate the applicants that do come in front of the board to get clearance on what they're trying to do with their property. In these cases. So my, my, my vote is yes, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much to the board and Mr. Chairman, and happy holidays to everyone.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
You as well.
Enjoy your pool.
Thank you. Hello?
Mr. Moreno, we got to cut him loose. Eileen, please.
Hold on one second.
That was me calling.
Asking for an invitation to the pool?
Yeah. Yeah, in six months. And Mr. Miller, he's not on the next applicant, is he, Eileen?
No, he's not. We'll take him out.
Okay, so it looks like we're back to where we need to be. So we have another application on the agenda. This application, case number BA twenty-two dash sixteen, Paul Vallejo, bulk variance. Application of Paul Vallejo as applicant and owner of premises known as thirty-seven Jennifer Drive, block thirty-three dot zero two. Lot five, seeking bulk variance approval for recently constructed in-ground swimming pool with associated paver patio. That was installed within point seven feet of the easterly rear property line and one point one foot. From the northerly side property line. Relief is also required for a PVC shed structure. Which is installed within one point five feet of the northerly side property line. Expiration date, March sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Eileen, who do we have?
We have Mr. Vallejo coming in the meeting.
Is Mr. Vallejo representing himself?
Ah, yes, and he should have Christine Cofone, but I don't see her in the meeting.
Justin Osziello is here from her office. He has his hand raised, Eileen.
Okay, thank you. He's coming in.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members and professionals. Justin Osziello, Cofone Consulting Group. Uh, a professional planner representing the applicant, Mr. Vallejo.
Okay, so. Um, Mr. Bear?
Yes, can Mr. Vallejo and Mr. Osziello please raise your right hand? You're muted, Mr. Vallejo too. You need to unmute.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Do you, uh, raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you gave will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do. Justin Osziello, professional planner.
Can you spell your last name, Mr. Osziello?
A U C I E L L O.
And Mr. Vallejo is to state your name and spell your last.
Paul Vallejo, V A L L E J O.
Your witnesses are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Great, since you're the one that's representing the applicant, Mr. Osziello. Do, do we need to hear Mr. Osziello's credentials, Mr. Bear?
Well, I think he's been before the board before, but yes, if he's, as a, right, so you should go through this, Justin.
Master's degree of planning for Rutgers University in two thousand and five. I've been a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and eight. Uh, my license is current and in good standing. Uh, I've appeared uh, in front of this board and uh, boards on hundreds of occasions throughout the state of New Jersey. Um, over the course of uh, more than a decade.
We accept your credentials, Mr. Osziello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so we're here uh, this evening for the application uh, of a, a Mr. Vallejo. Um, thirty-seven Jennifer Drive, block uh, thirty-three point oh two, lot five. Um, I'll, I'll be pretty brief with, with my opening and then we'll go into, I'll, you know, show you the aerial and, and the site. And, and uh, what's proposed. Um, Mr. Vallejo is this evening, he's seeking a, a bulk variance. For a um, recently constructed. Uh, uh, swimming pool paver patio that was installed within point seven feet of the easterly rear property. And one point one feet from the um, a northerly side property line. I believe that it stated in uh, Mr. Conliff's uh, review letter, that relief is also required. For the shed, which is installed within uh, one point five feet of the uh, northerly property line. Uh, but I believe there's been a recent change to the ordinance which sets, uh, that setback at zero. So I'll defer to the board. Uh, if the board wants to hear um, the reasoning for that, I'll certainly provide that. Um, but I just wanted to get that onto the record at this point. Um. Of course, as you heard in the previous application, the site is in the R three zone as well. Uh, it is undersized. Uh, there's also the existing um, non-conformities of, of lot width and, and front yard setback. Um, as I had previously stated, and, and prior to going to my, to my testimony, I like to give you. Uh, the reasoning as to um, what, what had happened with my client, um, and, and what had transpired. Uh, from the point of his, his ideas, uh, and the actual installation of, of the patio. Uh, and, and the safety fence. Now, um, now variance relief is not required for the safety fence. But as you'll hear in my, in my testimony, uh, it is instrumental relative to the, uh, to the patio. Um, Mr. Vallejo, uh, purchased this property in twenty fourteen. Uh, he's done really everything by the book, uh, since then. Uh, he's made, uh, made various improvements to the property. Um, he's got, he's got three, three young girls. When COVID hit, just like everybody else, he wanted to, you know, do something. Uh, you know, you know, for his family and he started to come up with the idea of, of doing the pool. Um, his mother is uh, um, disabled, uh, and, and has issues uh, with uh, mobility. Um, so really kind of part and parcel to the reasoning uh, for, for the pavers. Uh, is, is, is to accommodate the access uh, to the pool and around the pool. And also really most importantly, for his daughters, you know, to ensure that there's enough room um, for the safety fence and the ability. To, to walk around. Um, so really that, that's, that's the background. Uh, I believe that there was some sort of, of, of miscommunication uh, between my client. Um, and the township. Uh, he's not really sure why, but apparently he was under the impression that he was able to install. Uh, the pavers uh, as is. Uh, obviously that. Obviously, that's not the case, because that's why we're here this evening in front of the board to seek relief. But, you know, Mr. Vallejo has really done the right thing. He always intends to do the right thing. And unfortunately, he is here because of, obviously, he needs the relief. Um. If I can, Mr. Chair, I do have a few exhibits. These were all, with the exception of the site aerial, these were all submitted in concert with the application.
Charlie? You're okay? We'll put them up.
Sure, as long as they've been submitted to Eileen.
Eileen?
Yeah, Justin, do you know what you're pulling up? I can pull it up if it's easier if you.
Yeah, that would be great, Charlie. So it's in the application package itself. If we can go to the the site survey. I believe that's on the PDF. It's page 17, 17 of 37. Thank you. That's it. Um, this is, this is an exhibit. This was submitted as part of the application package by Mr. Miller, who who, of course, was just in the previous application. This is dated February 21st, 2020. Right down there, and this essentially is the ASBIL survey, which shows the pool, of course, in the upper left. The child safety fence right there. On the top, there is a denotation of the paver patio, and of course, the paver patio is the hatched area that extends right where Mr. Conliff is moving his cursor. And of course, the dwelling to the front and then the other portion of the property opposite the pool of a deck and steps as well. So this is just to orient the board, you know, as to what currently exists on the site itself. I understand that there were some questions in the engineering report about drainage. As you can see on on this survey in the exhibit, there is an arrow which points to a very narrow strip of a grate, which then drains to a point of the property, which then seeps into the soil. Again, I am a professional planner. I'm not an engineer. I'm just trying to orient the board as to what currently exists. And also, on the sides of the property, there are some areas with rocks, which also assist with the drainage as well. So this is, this is the existing condition, or this is, you know, what currently exists today. Mr. Conliff, if you could, can you go to the next slide? And I'll quickly just really run through these photos. These photographs were taken by the applicant, and I'll quickly go through them. This is just the over kind of view, the overhead of the pool and the paver area, and as you can see, the fence, the vinyl fence is in the back and the side as well. Next. This is just, okay, so this is, this is an image of the AC compressor and the pool equipment, which is next to the house. Next slide, please. Another view. The same area and also showing the fence on the side. And the safety fence, the same view, but looking to the rear, which also shows the safety fence. And here, I think it's important to note for the record, you know, the reason why, of course, there is the the pavers is to ensure that that the applicant's mother is able to navigate the area and also the space for the safety fence for his daughters. Next slide, please. Again, another view, which shows the side property line, and as you can see, very attractive. Next slide, please. Again, this is another view. I think what's important here is you can see the adjacent property. They have a similar setup, but they do have rocks instead of pavers there. But they do have poured concrete, which extends around the pool as well, and they also have a safety fence. So this is a condition that's similar to the adjacent property. Next slide, please. Another view from a different perspective. This is showing the rear of the property, obviously, very, very heavily wooded. And again, you can see the perspective of the view from the other portion of the property where the steps are looking towards the pool. Next slide, please. Again, another view, you could see the grassy area and the stones next to the trees. Next slide, please. Again, another view, I think what you can see here is you can see the other, the other side of the backyard. You could see that grassy area, and you could also see the three trees. What's important to note here, if you go, if you think back to to the survey, there is that drainage area that leads back to where these trees are located. Next slide, please. Again, this is the side. This is the extent of the deck, which obviously leads down on the steps. And this is important here. You could see the drainage area or the drainage pipe grate, which leads down to the pipe, which then extends to the rear of the property. Next slide, please. This is, this is a view of the stones that are in the rear that extend onto the other side near the pool. Next slide, please. And again, this is, this is important. This is the endpoint of the drainage from the grate and the pipe. This is right at the rear of the property. I believe that is, and then this is another view of the property. This is along the rear edge of the property, looking towards the side. Another view, and here is the first image you're going to see of the shed. Now, relief is not required for the shed. It's my understanding that it's not required. However, you're going to see in the next slide, there was a question in Mr. Conliff's letter. Again, another view of the shed, another view, and you can see that little kind of sliver in the area. More, okay, so this is a question that was raised in Mr. Conliff's letter. The applicant's mother has mobility issues, and when she's, when she's down with the applicant's daughters, because she has mobility issues, it's hard for her, or if not impossible for her, to go back into the house if she, if she, you know, needs to use the restroom. So this is a portable mode where, you know, she can use this area inside the shed when she needs to. The client represents that whenever this is utilized, the waste is removed ASAP. It doesn't sit there. It doesn't fester, whatever. It's removed and it's done with. Next slide, please. Again, this is another, this is an image of grass, which obviously is pervious coverage, which helps with drainage. And again, there is no, in the R3 zone, there is no requirement for pervious, for impervious coverage. However, I would represent that, again, not as an engineer, but as a professional planner. I think, I think the applicant has been cognizant of the need for drainage, and I believe that there are also neighbors who are on the call as well, who, who, you know, will raise their hands later to kind of talk about this proposal and, you know, any impact to that. Next slide, please.
That's it.
Yeah, I think that's all I have for photos.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conliff. I, um. That's pretty much, you know, hopefully, this was enough to orient the board, you know, to the existing condition and also the proposed condition, of course. And just very briefly, you know, I would say that, you know, I understand that, you know, he is here. This has been installed already. But, you know, he feels, and I, you know, completely agree with him, that when you look at the benefits here of this application, and you do the balancing test between the benefits versus the detriments, I certainly think that the benefits, you know, doing the detriments. Number one, I would say that what's proposed, as you saw in the one photo, this is consistent with the neighboring property. The applicant is not proposing something that's really inconsistent with the character, you know, of this area. I believe that, you know, despite the fact that variance is required for the setbacks, you know, for the patio, I would say that despite the fact that's required, as you saw from the photos and the whole kind of overview of the backyard, I still believe that criteria C of the MLUL is met in this instance. I believe that, that there's still sufficient, you know, open space on this property. There's still sufficient usage of this property. I would also say that there's sufficient space on this property to accommodate what's proposed, which is another purpose of zoning. I don't think the applicant is really trying to shoehorn anything onto the site that's inappropriate or really, you know, out of character with the area. That's positive criteria. Over the negative criteria, I would say that what's proposed is not a substantial detriment to the public good.
Justin, Chairman, hold on. The chairman has a question.
So, so, you know, you can save this for closing statements if you'd like. I'd like to hear from Ms. Bean on, you know, her perspective on all this.
I mean, I don't necessarily, I mean, obviously, the town has requirements for separation of the pool and the patio, you know, for purposes related to drainage impacts to the surrounding properties. So I would really, in this instance, in terms of the setback of the patio, defer to Charlie to see whether or not he's satisfied that it's not gonna result in runoff to the adjacent properties, both on the side and to the rear. I understand the concern with, you know, access for someone that is maybe not as ambulatory as others. But Charlie, are you satisfied that having that patio up to the fence is not gonna cause runoff to the back and to the side?
So what I can say is there's, there's no grading that was provided on the survey provided by the applicant. They just showed the physical location of the patio, so I can't advise the board whether or not there's any impact to the neighboring properties. You know, looking at this at face value, I can tell you typically you pitch a concrete or patio that's adjacent to a pool away from the pool. Looking at the plan on the right-hand side of the pool here, there is a trench drain, so those areas probably drain to the trench drain and either I think the applicant showed a picture of a PVC overflow to the north, to the rear, or sorry, I guess it's, that's east in this, on the survey. But along the north and the east, as far as where this patio drains, you know, I can't tell you, you know, where it goes, because there wasn't any grading provided on the plans. We have had some other applications in the past where, and I also think it's important for the, maybe Mr. Aguirre to chime in here, you know, whether or not the applicant filed the plot plan to get an approval for a pool, you know, or whether this was just built without getting any prior approvals, at least from the from the engineering department, because I would think that this would get flagged as far as needing variances for the pool being within 10 feet of the property line. Johnny?
Oh, Charlie, I'm gonna show my screen just for the boards. Hold on a sec. So this was the plan that was submitted and approved by our land use department and engineering department. Obviously, what was originally proposed fit in the property, you could see that the pool that was eventually installed is rectangular in shape. The patio that's in the approved plan met setbacks. I don't know if the fence issue was eventually flagged initially, but I know it was noted in Charlie's report. We can't approve fencing on someone else's property with regards to a pool barrier. Our construction official requires that all fencing be the property owners or the pool owners own fencing, and it must be on their property. We can't approve any kind of a structure on an adjoining property, much like our previous case. But, you know, there was a plan that was submitted. It was not followed and thus creating an issue that brings them before the board tonight.
Yeah, I think that's problematic.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Glenn.
Are we elephant in the room here? It seems to me the very same Mr. Miller, who represented himself as the engineer and the contractor in the earlier case and who in permission to do all this work, is the same contractor who put in this pool and who obviously didn't follow our township requirements. I don't know how we address that issue, but it does seem, at least to me, that there's an issue there.
Well, we need to know, so.
I mean, I don't understand how we went from this to what is out there. How did we get from, like, you had to know that it wasn't consistent with what was approved. So how did we get from here to where we are? Because it's significantly different. It's not even just a little different. Like, the shape of the pool is different. Everything is different. And now you're coming and asking for forgiveness, not for permission, when you submitted something that got approved by the town that was compliant. So how did we get here?
So I, I can I, can you guys hear me?
Vallejo, go ahead.
So I wanted to let you know, when I had sat down and went over the paperwork with Eileen Rubano, she told me to draw, so I didn't want to interrupt or intervene in anyone's conversation or anything like that. I figured I'd just wait for someone to ask me this question. So she had, I had shown her this, and I had shown her that the pool had changed. And then she told me, since I'm just a homeowner, that I had the ability to draw on top of the actual, the actual survey. So that illustration, besides everything else, but that where the patio is, that is me on Microsoft PDF, taking my time to draw everything to explain what is currently there, and that's what I was instructed to do by Mrs. Rubano.
Well, I don't mean to speak for Mrs. Rubano, who's not here, but I can honestly tell you that they're under no circumstances. Did she say, draw it, and you're not gonna, it's allowed? There's no way she would say that. So.
And I think what Jen is asking is, how did we get from what's shown on John's screen to what was presented to the board tonight? Not, not what, you know, how you presented the, you know, what the board is saying, how it went from complying with the ordinance to what we're seeing tonight. That's what we want to know.
So the pool, because of COVID and everything that had happened, the pool had to get changed, because we were waiting over a year, and they kept telling me that this pool was coming, this pool was coming. And then this pool, then they couldn't get it, the materials, so on and so forth. So then the pool switched. And these plans also were submitted to the township. I never saw the plans, so they were submitted to the township. And then, when the time came, I had passed all the inspections, and there was one inspection left with, I believe it was zoning. And the gentleman had come out, and he said that he's here to measure the grade. And at that time, there was, there was still dirt on the side. Next is, there's, there's, there's three feet of concrete around the pool, and then there was dirt. So I asked him, I said, you know, I wanted to do the shed and the mobility for my mom and the fence. I said, is there an issue if I had done pavers? And with any, like, setbacks? And he goes, that's not my, that's not my department. What I, what I measure is just the grade. And then the gentleman had come out, I believe his name, I believe his name was Justin as well. But this is a long time ago. It was in July, or even earlier that June. And I actually spoke with him, and I had said I didn't see that I received the final approval. And he had said, everything looks good back there. I checked everything. Everything is good. My only is the shed. And the shed is kind of what, he said, I'm not sure, because that shed's right on the property line. And he said, if you don't hear from me, everything is good to go. And then I had received the summons about three weeks later in the mail.
So, Mr. Chair.
It was a miscommunication.
So going back to your initial question about how I feel about it, I cannot opine on the relief that's being requested until Charlie receives. I cannot opine on the relief that's being requested until Charlie receives the necessary grading information. Because I can't say to you that I'm comfortable that there's no negative impact associated with runoff, which is the whole intent of keeping that away from the. Rear and the side without the information that Charlie would need to be able to make that determination. And I think the applicant. Should provide that before you guys act on it.
Got it. So Mister Vallejo. I have a question. Who, who was the, um, contractor that? Did all that work back there?
Uh, but in New Jersey pavers.
Mister Bear, what are we thinking?
Um, it sounds like it needs to be carried unless the board's satisfied or ready to vote one way or another. I still don't know what the answer to the question is, is how did the pool go from what's depicted to what was constructed? Like, who did that? This, like, I don't like, was that the contractor? Was that you, Mister Vallejo? Like, how did that? What was the, how did that happen as opposed to what happened during inspections?
Well, when I had spoken with the contractor and I explained what I was looking to achieve, he said, no one has ever said. They wanted less patio space. Every time I've done a job, everyone always says, I wish I had more patio space.
Yes, but you have to, you can't just do whatever you want. There are rules. So, you know, and, and this is exactly what Charlie was referring to in the last application that someone comes in and says, oh, let me give you some extra concrete. Because I have some extra on the truck or whatever, and then it goes from something that's compliant to something that's not compliant. That's exactly what he was just saying. And so it doesn't make it compliant. And, and so. You know, you're, I don't feel at all that this is a hardship. I feel like this is a clear C two variance. And you need to, you need to prove that there's no negative impact. And the only way. That I'm gonna feel comfortable advising the board that there's no negative impact is that if Charlie gets the grading information that he needs. To ensure that there's no drainage problem. So I, I understand, I mean, we are where we are, obviously it is in. I, I, I have to say it's a little concerning to me that we went from something like this to something that we saw prior. Um, but you guys are gonna have to do a little bit more work and provide some grading information and show how the drainage works. In order for me to feel comfortable on a C two variance to tell the board that there's no negative impact, because absent that information. I mean, that's the whole point of the setback requirement is to make sure that we don't, we have had that in the past. Uh, way back when, when Jack was still with me on the board. Where the, the concrete could go all the way to the fence line and we had numerous problems where the, the rain runoff and other things. Were running onto adjoining properties, which is why the, the town decided to put, to put the requirement to move the, the concrete back ten feet. So I, you know, I, I think you guys are gonna have to provide some additional grading in order for Charlie to be able to determine whether or not there's an issue.
Mister Chair, Mister Chair.
Yes.
Chairman?
Yeah.
Just wondered, who did the design on the pool that's on the screen right now? Was that Mister Miller also? I don't see a name as an architect or.
Down, down, down. Bill Vault, he's a P E. He does a lot of pool plans.
It's just a pool plan?
Yeah, so he, you know, he does a pool plan, he reviews, it's a plot plan for the pool and there is grading on this plan. So, you know, I don't know if the other plan ultimately that was constructed, but. If you look at this plan, it shows contours and grades, which would enable Charlie to determine. That the water's not gonna run off onto the adjacent property.
Okay, Jen, so Mister Osceolo, are you, you, you were still with us?
Yeah, I'm here, Mister Chair.
All right, you're hearing all of this.
Yes, we will, uh, regroup and, and we'll get, we'll get what the board needs to, to make a decision. I, I would just ask Mister Chair. Um, there are some member, there are some neighbors, um, who are here this evening. I mean, I'll certainly defer, uh, to you. Uh, if you want to hear them this evening, uh, but since they're already here, would it be okay if they can just kind of talk about? Their, their thoughts on this and, and their viewpoint on what's proposed.
Mister Bear, we're not gonna be voting on this. You want to open it up to public?
No.
I would wait.
I would wait.
Wait to all the tests.
I would wait.
Yeah, otherwise you're gonna have to do it again.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, board members, before we move forward, do you have any questions for the applicant or the representative? Go ahead, Mister.
I have a quick one. Somewhere along this whole process, is there an actual? Plan drawn up for what was put there that can also be submitted that we can see? I mean, they had to build it based on some kind of a plan. Or, or is that too much, Charlie? You think they just need to do like an as-built so you can see the elevations?
They provided a plan, it's in the, in your pocket, it's under topo.
Oh, okay.
So I, I think if you're asking for what was submitted originally to the town as a plot plan, I think Mister Aguirre, Eileen can provide that to the board members, correct?
No, no, you know what? I'm sorry, Charlie. Jen just corrected me. I, I see the plan in here now. Okay. Uh, okay.
And then I just want to clarify for the applicant too. So, so typically on residential subdivisions like this, when they're originally built. You know, the common property line, the side lot lines tend to be swaled to either the rear or to the front yard area. So obviously, you know, looks from this plan and from the photos, you know, you've constructed your paper patio to the limits of a property. So conceivably that swell may have been impacted or filled in. So you're gonna need to give us some, you know, topography of what this as-built condition of the paver is in relation also to some of the. Topography on the neighboring property, because, you know, especially, uh, I'm just gonna share my screen again. Apologize here. So if this just has like a foot or two foot drop off onto the neighboring property, you know, that's something that obviously has to be. Captured, it can't just free flow onto the neighbor's property. If this sheet flows to the rear property line, we're gonna need to know kind of where that water goes. Does it just sit there? Does it, you know, flow into this neighbor's yard? Uh, you know, I know you got the one trench stream that daylights out the back here. Looked like there were some other pop-up emitters, those need to just be indicated on the plans. Um, you know, we just need to know for the board's perspective, where wall this water's flowing and, and does it impact the neighboring properties in, in a negative manner? Or, uh, you know, does it all get to the public right away?
Okay, thank, thank you, Mister Conliff. We, I will certainly, um, uh, you know, we appreciate the board's time. Uh, and the comments and, uh, we'll, we'll come back, uh, with, um, you know, with your questions hopefully answered.
So, and I apologize, Justin, this, this is a question for Mister Aguirre too, and I'm, I'm not fully up with the pool code. But, uh, the pool has to be yours and on your property, right? Or can you get a, like, any type of? Written agreement from a neighboring property owner, or is that not comply with code?
With regards to the fence?
Yeah.
No, has to be yours and on your property, completely yours. Uh, and that's just to avoid any issues where. If the neighbor decides to take down the fence, you are no longer protected by a pool barrier. And you obviously don't have any rights to, uh, restrict anybody from taking down their own fence.
And, and the reason that I just note that, because along the, the rear easterly property line, the fence on the survey that was provided with the application. Looks like it's on their neighboring property. So that's gonna have to be relocated onto the applicant's property to comply with the poll code. Uh, just so there's no liability issues, um, all around.
If I may, Mister Conliff, I, I, I have a permit that was issued here, uh, and I apologize if, if this isn't. The correct permit, but this was issued in April of, of twenty fifteen for, for a, a six-foot, uh, vinyl fence. Um, and I believe I, I can submit, I, I believe this was submitted to the board. If it wasn't, I apologize, we can get that to the board. Um, but there is a permit that I have in my, in my record here for a fence that was issued, uh, by the township.
Justin, can you just submit that?
Yeah.
In case you don't have it in our pack.
I will, thank you.
Wow, okay. So.
Mister Chairman, I have one question.
Mister Bracing.
Assuming the grading is adequate and sufficient. Uh, uh, as you said in the previous application, this is R three, this lot's about six thousand square feet undersized.
Yeah.
Nine thousand where fifteen thousand is required. You know, i- if, if the grading is adequate and, and the neighbors aren't having any drainage issues. I mean, can, can I get a little bit of guidance from our professionals as to what we would then be really looking at?
So the requirement for a bulk, for a C two variance is that the benefit outweighs the detriment. So right now we are unclear as to quote unquote whether there is a detriment and if there is what the extent of that detriment is. So until we get that information and Charlie has the ability to review it and ensure that the water gets. You know, directed towards the street and not towards the neighbors, you know, we have approved things like this in the past, we just have had more information. With respect to the grading to ensure that there's no impact off-site to other property owners. Um. So at that point, you have to make a decision as to, is the benefit of this additional concrete, which there is no coverage requirement. Justin was absolutely right about that, um, is the additional concrete and, and the encroachment into the setback on the side and the rear. You know, providing access for somebody who has ambulatory issues. So I think that's a legitimate concern. Is the benefit of that outweighed by any negative impact? So there's a balance. So you guys are gonna have to make that decision and we certainly can help and advise, but right now I just don't have the information in order to tell you. That the negative is not, you know, does not outweigh the positive. Like, we just need that to be able to do that balance. And if it balances positive. Better than negative, then that's something that I would recommend that the board grant. So that, it's just, we just need the information to ensure. That there's no, there's no impact, that's all.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, and is there, is there any aerial that we can look at real quick? Because it looks like there's wooded area behind the house. Much like the last application, it looks.
Mister Bracy, yes, I, I, I do have an aerial if the board would like to pull me up or.
It looks like it's common open space behind there as well, or is that part of that lot, Charlie, where that house is?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to make sure I was unmuted. I think it's part of this lot.
Yeah. So we, we really need to make sure that there's no impact to that lot, even though it's, it's open back there, it's still someone else's property and we just have to make sure that. Whatever occurs, this looks older, right? Because it doesn't look like. The pavement is in and the pool is in, in this area, yeah.
This is from April twenty twenty-one, so this was done after that.
Right, so we have to make sure that the water doesn't run to the left side of the screen and the water doesn't run to the top of the screen. That's what we're just need to make sure.
So, and then just to give some clarity to kind of add to Jen's comment, and this is, I'm not saying this is something that is going to happen with this application. But we have had ones where people have come in, gotten approval for something, and then it gets built to the property line and the water directly sheet flows onto the neighbor. Property causing an issue and the board has required, you know, applicants remove, you know, a foot of concrete and put in like a gravel, recharge trench and things in that nature. Not saying it needs to go that way with this one, we just need the more information to determine whether or not it's causing any impact to the neighboring properties.
And Mister Osceolo, if it is causing an impact and you find that, then you probably need to cut away. Along the fence line and put that gravel in there so that you have proper drainage.
Understood, Mister Chair, thank you.
And, and, and just as you know, Charlie and I are available at all times, so if you come up with something and you want to go over it with either one of us. As much as I love talking about drainage, I would not, my feelings would not be hurt if you called Charlie directly. But it's just something that we just need to make sure before we move forward, that's all.
Thank you everybody for your time and, and happy holidays, much appreciated.
Whoa, 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 wait, wait. This application is being carried. We need a date, Eileen.
Uh, Mister Chair. Before you continue. Uh, just want to clarify something, uh, in Charlie's notes, uh, just so that Mister Osceolo is, uh, uh, aware of it. The zero-foot setback is for, uh, a shed only. Uh, any accessory structure being used for anything other than storage. Um, the height will be required as the setback. So, uh, if it's a shed to store personal items. Um, I agree that a, it's allowed to have a zero set, setback. But if it's being used as a commode or anything else other than for storage. Uh, the ordinance classifies that as an accessory structure in which the height determines the setback off the property line. So there may still be a need for, um, a variance relief if it's being used as anything other than storage.
Yeah, a- and it doesn't look like that on the plan, but we do have an ordinance that, um, governs for like cabanas, pool cabanas and things like that. Not saying that that's what this is, but you know, you know, just be upfront with the board on what, what actually takes place in that. Because, uh, if something else is happening in there and then it gets brought to light later, you know, you could potentially have to come back to the board, which is not good for anyone.
Okay, we'll do, thank you.
All right, thank you. Eileen, we're gonna carry this.
I have January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. I have two other applications on the agenda.
Do you think you'll be ready by the January twenty-third?
Um, Mister Vallejo, what's, uh, what do you think? You think, uh, you'll be able to talk to your? Your engineer, uh, on this? I mean, you, you think we should maybe go in, i- if the board has, uh, the availability in February? Because we're gonna need to get these plans in, uh, ten days in advance and that's gonna, obviously with the holidays, it's gonna be difficult.
Eileen, what's the first one in February?
February thirteen.
February thirteen.
Uh, Mister Chair, I, I, I think we can, we can pencil that in, uh, if anything comes up, uh, we'll be sure to reach out. Uh, to, to Miss Kuzo and, uh, advise her otherwise.
Okay, so for everyone that's tuned in, case number BA twenty-two dash sixteen, Paul Vallejo. Bulk variance, this application is being carried to February thirteen, twenty twenty-three. Exploration date will change March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Mister Chair, um, uh, no notice required.
Eileen?
Uh, no.
As long as we don't go, uh, in live, it should be active, right?
Yeah.
Right, that should be fine.
Got it, thank you. No, no further notices required, sir.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays. Happy New Year. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Very great, Matt.
Likewise, thank you.
Oh, boy. Okay, so here we are. We have, we have work to do here.
Do I hang up? I'm not sure, I'm done.
Vallejo, you're gonna, Eileen's gonna let you loose. She's gonna cut you loose.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, so do we want to go to the, um, year-end review first?
The bylaws will be quick, Mister Chairman, if that matters. Either way.
All right, you sent us the bylaws. And do you want to go through it real quick?
Sure.
Go ahead, sir.
Just opening it up one second.
Really, anything that's been added or changed, moves, adds and changes, as they say, max?
Yeah, so what the main addition of the bylaws was allowing. To conduct meetings virtually in the site to the law that allows that. So we added a section in one point two dash one about virtual meetings.
Okay, meetings which are held virtually shall be on Zoom or other platform, which allows compliance with NJSA ten. Colon four dash three. Dash nine, tag three, okay, and then it, it lists everything, the emergency remote meeting protocol for local public bodies. Okay.
Yep, so those are, that, there's site both to the state statute and the DCA regulations concerning. The, uh, virtual meetings. Uh, and. The mi- the other, there was a, the old bylaws had a seven thirty PM start time, so you start at seven. So we changed that. And, and there was a, we added the, uh, township social media. Requirement to comply with the townships in three colon six of the bylaws. Indicating that the township's social media policy shall apply, uh, to the Board of Adjustment. And its members. And I could circulate the, I have the, uh, a PDF of the township's social media policy as well. And I could circulate the, I have the, uh, a PDF of the township social media policy as well.
Okay. So the township has a social media policy. Got it.
Correct. The council adopted that by resolution. Um, and then we would be incorporating that into our rules and regulations.
Got it. And. Since this has been a living document dating back to. When it was first adopted in September of eight nineteen eighty nine. I'm wondering, does the planning board also have a similar? Rules of the planning board or?
They have bylaws, but I have to tell you, I can't tell you the last time we looked at them.
All right. So once this thing is approved, I would request that we, we share it with them so they can get a good look at it.
I think that's a good idea.
And, uh, Andy, you'd be able to, you'd be able to send us the social media policy?
Yes.
Okay, great. I really don't participate in it, but I'd be interested to read it. Thank you.
Yeah. Andy, also, didn't we also put some time limits on public comments?
Oh, that's right. Um, right. We talked about adding, I guess, I guess. Thank you for reminding me. Um, we talked about putting in a five minute rule.
Oh, God bless you.
For, but I think we wanted word discussion on that, Rich, right? I think, or.
Yeah, that's what we were gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah, get some input. Yeah.
Mr. Bear, would it have to differentiate between public comment being limited to five minutes and testimony? Being unlimited, because I mean, they are.
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, the ta- it wouldn't be testimony, Mark. It would be comment on testimony questions, et cetera. It wouldn't be, is obviously the testimony of our large applicant, even the ones we had tonight are longer than that. So, yeah.
Well, if a member of public, you know, had a, you know, uh, many specific questions of an applicant's professional, they can't be limited to five minutes.
Um, no, they could. Cause honestly, it's a lo- yeah, the public questioning an applicant could. I mean, it's a long.
Five minutes is a lot longer than you think, honestly.
I was gonna say, you'd be surprised if you actually had a timer going and, and, and I would suggest. You know, sometimes we have some interactive back and forth, but I would, the way you'll allow the, the, uh, member to. Go through whatever questions they have. So the, so, and then at the end, the, uh, witness can answer all those questions. Just so you're not cutting into the time. You have to keep track of it.
And who would keep track of the time?
Well, it either be, we'll have to see administratively figure that out, but. I guess either one of the, I, I, either Eileen or. You know, I've been in meetings where board members have put out, you know. They have a designated board member who just runs it off their, uh, you know, their five minute.
Well, Wendell used to have an hour, uh, 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 a night timer.
Yes, he did. But in one of my towns, they, they, the chairman sets five minutes and then, you know, when the alarm goes off, that's it.
I was gonna say, would it, would it make sense to add to our requirement at the discretion of the chairman?
Yeah, yes, Glenn. We had, yeah, and Richard suggested that too. But yeah, that was, yeah. If it's, you know, in the middle of a substantive thing and the chairman wants to extend the time, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that totally.
So Andy. Chairman, sorry, go ahead.
My, my question is, it's five minutes for questions and five minutes for comment. They're two separate five minutes, right? Because on larger applications, you know, first we have. The questioning of the professionals and then we open it up for public comment.
That, that's typically how it works. Yeah. In most other places. But what I will say, what it tends to do is it tends to cut down on repetitive comments. Because that way, you know, if you have all these points that you have to give on to somebody before you, I, you know, ripped off the first four. You, the, what I find is that the person would say, I agree with what was previously said, and then I have this to add. And it, it stops a lot of redundancy for sure.
I think that's kind of the, the whole thrust of the idea, right?
Yeah, exactly. But we also, I think with larger applications, we would have the, the ability, they could question the professionals. And then at the end of all testimony, then there would be comments as far as, is that correct?
Yes, I think so. That's how I would do it. Yeah.
Because, because in some cases we wait and we combine. Because it's a smaller application, we combine it to comments and questions.
Exactly.
We open the public. So therefore, you know, at the discretion, you know, five minutes may be too little and ten minutes. Maybe just right. So we'll, we'll have to figure it out.
I like the idea of discretion of the chairman. Personally, that's. Chairman steers the ship, so.
Okay. And so then. Um, there's nothing in here about any education or training, right? Um.
I don't know that that's a bylaw requirement, Mr. Chairman, the, the train. I think that goes to a membership requirement, right?
The NJPO man is, has mandatory training for new board members and it's, it's. Um, offered throughout the state. Obviously, the most convenient would be the one that's in Monmouth County. That's like the five hour course, the beginner's course that has the exam at the end. There's also an advanced training course, which is not mandatory, but board members are, you know, free to take that. That's a little bit more interactive. Um, because board members have been in theory on, you know, sitting on various boards, uh, for a while. And so they want to ask some questions or get, get information, new things like EV parking or whatever. Uh, but that's issued through, uh, the NJPO.
I find it very, very valuable. I, I really enjoy it. I know COVID kind of messed with it on us. I'm hoping this year we get back to it.
All right, Mr. Parisi, I'm sorry. You said you, you had a question. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I had a question about, um. If we're gonna continue with these virtual meetings, was there any discussion about hybrid meetings? Where there would be both an opportunity to meet in person and virtually?
We did discuss that, Mark. I'm, I, I think Eileen. Can somebody, uh, refresh my memory on that?
I'm, I'm not sure the township has the technology for that. It's more difficult.
Tried it. We tried it when COVID first happened and it did not work out. So I don't know that the town has the capability to do it. I know it came up and I don't think it was really favorably received.
Have we looked? I mean, it's been a few years. I think the county is having some of their meetings hybrid. I think Brookdale's Board of Trustees meets hybrid. I mean, is it something that we could possibly look into? Because I mean, if these other institutions are able to do it successfully and the technology exists for them.
We, we do it at work. It's just a matter of putting a camera in the room and broadcasting what's going on.
Well, I think it's easier, like you can have like you, where some people can watch on, well, call YouTube. But making it interactive where you could watch and participate like remotely is more. Difficult. I'm not saying it's obviously achievable, but it also depends on. I mean, honestly, it's a question for the manager and the IT staff in town about this point. I mean, I'm not a technology person, but I just know I've encountered these difficulties in other municipalities in doing. The hybrid meeting. It, it depends on the system like you have partially.
I, I'm a smaller scale. I'm a real estate instructor and we do try them and it requires. Better microphones, number one. You don't want like one microphone in a room, not hearing what people say. And someone to monitor the stream and to monitor the, the comments and all that. So. Achievable, yes. It's just, it, it requires a, a few more bodies, so to speak. So. I don't know how the town would distribute that responsibility.
Well, at the very basic, we should, in my opinion, and I love sitting at home on Monday nights. But we should set a date where we would expect to be live again.
Well, you know, Glenn, what we're doing is we're looking at the DCA law, right? And the law. Has not been changed. They haven't rescinded it. And as we're through the tridemic this winter. It looks like, you know, flu, RSV, COVID is still prevalent, especially in the younging. You know, everybody's kids have caught something, you know, going back to school and so forth. So I, I, I think when I talk to my doctors at Memorial Sloan. They're telling me they think this thing's gonna lift probably in the May timeframe is what they're talking about. So. You know, so I'm thinking, I, you know, especially, um, Title forty two. Uh, you got the Supreme Court, you know, putting a stay on that because based on the pandemics, you know, it's, uh. It's, it's the after effect in the aftermath of just trying to maintain good, healthy, you know.
Uh, understood, but I think we owe it to our residents to open, uh, it, there's a, a perception of. I shouldn't say secrecy, but a perception of inaccessibility. If we're not, if the public doesn't have full access to our meetings.
I mean, I think it's something that the governing body and the manager has started to talk about. I don't think they're at the point now where they're. Ready to move, but it's some, it's an ongoing conversation, which will be, you know, and the other thing that we have to keep in mind as well is. You know, applicants have noticed for meetings beginning of the year virtually and putting an onus on them. So we have to figure it out. Like it has to be a balance. And so it's going to be an ongoing conversation.
Absolutely. I feel like it's, I feel like it's gonna be one of those things where you're just gonna have to rip the Band-Aid off at some, some point. Um, and you know, to that point, you know, about what, what Glenn had mentioned about access. My only request would be this, that, you know, if, if the, the pub, if we were meeting in person, the public would have an opportunity to assemble in a public meeting place. And interact with each other. And on the virtual platform, the public has no ability to see who else is on the platform or interacting with each other. So if there is a Zoom platform that enables the public to see each other and interact with each other. I think that that would at least temporarily give them that opportunity. To feel as though they're assembling and, and they have a capacity to see and interact with each other that right now they don't have. Because if I, any member of the public comes on our Zoom meeting, uh, our Zoom zoning board meeting. They have no idea who else is on and they have no ability to interact with them, which is something they would have if they were sitting in a public meeting.
I didn't know that. They, they can't access the, uh, participants.
No. They have to be panelists.
Mr. Aguilar.
I would just like to quickly just weigh in real quick on one quick thing. And I, I, I'm not against going live at all. I'm happy either way. But I do have to say, I've taken notes in my book and I do feel that. As far as the public making come, well, Mr. Parisi's talking about is a different, uh, situation there, of course, but the public being able to come talk to us. I think we get more people from the public online than we did in person because it's easier for people to come on from home. But that's just a thought. Again, I'm happy either way. I'm just, I'm just putting in some, some thoughts there.
That's true. The hybrid is really an important thing that we should try to see. That can be worked out because I think it's benefits to both sides, whether it's Zoom or live and.
If it can be worked out, yes.
Cause if a member is sick that can't make it for some reason or has a health issue. I mean, this allows us to, you know, have, you know, not have issues where we're trying to get seven people to, you know, do a, uh. You know, use variance.
Yeah, we've had people like, you know, Glenn or Matt have logged in from, I think Matt was in Maine and Glenn, you were like in a hotel room somewhere else.
Right.
Where they were live, we probably wouldn't have been able to have a meeting. So I think they're close to the goal. I don't think we're gonna solve the issue tonight. I think that it's gonna be an ongoing conversation. I don't disagree with you, Mark, that at some point it's gonna be like, okay. Let's just rip off the Band-Aid. I just don't think we're there yet. And so it's something that we're gonna have to monitor moving forward and, and take it kind of month by month.
Yeah, put it on the radar for sure.
So could I just go back to, or is the board, um, supportive of inserting? A, a five minute rule, uh, for, you know, for questioning witnesses and then for. You know, uh, I guess as close, a statement in the end of an application.
And then five minutes for comments. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, sir. I, I agree.
Yes, with the understanding that the same person is afforded five minutes for, for both.
Yes.
Not one or the other.
Yes.
But you can transfer your time, but you can sell your time.
It's non-transferable.
Yes, good, good, good point, Mr. Bear. Absolutely.
That's on.
Cause otherwise, it's like, yeah, anyway. Okay.
All right. So this, so Mr. Bear. Relative to, um, the virtual meetings and so forth, you're going to keep us apprised, you, Jen, Charlie, what's going on in other towns? And we'll look at January, February, March. And if we, I think that we're gonna be coming back in May. We gotta make that announcement in March so that we can hear all the other applications and then begin live in May, right? Something to that effect, like sixty days in advance, Jen.
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, with the notice.
I just got my flu shot, so I'm, you know, I'm ready to go through May.
Unless there's a hybrid option.
Yeah, and we'll, I'll, I'll check with the township when they're, you know, through the manager's office if there's any. You know, where the IT is on that, Glenn, and how they're doing.
Great, thank you.
So, Mr. Bear, can you also check if they have a Zoom platform that allows the public to see and interact with each other during the course of a meeting? Like, it's like a breakout room feature type thing?
I, I do believe from my experience that that may be something they do have.
Yes. And Mr. Aguilar, that's why I called you, out your name, because we need to look at that like ASAP. I mean, you know, if, if the participants need to be able to, you know, group into a chat room, you know.
Yeah. But I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I believe what Mr. Parisi, the term that you probably look for, what Mark was talking about, the, uh, breakout room. I believe that's the term that Zoom uses, so.
And not to drag this conversation on longer, but with the breakout room, I don't know when you do that, if it allows you to still be able to actively be in the meeting. And hear what's going on. So that's something that just needs to be considered as well.
Just gotta look at the technology. That's all. Mr. Aguilar, you promised you're gonna look at that for us, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments on the, uh, the rules and of the zoning board of adjustment?
Mr. Chair, I have one more comment, not to, not to be annoying at all, but I. I, I saw there was a couple of reference, at least in rule three point, uh, three colon four removal of member. It references notify the township committee. I know that this was started prior to nineteen ninety three when we became a council manager government. I, I would just recommend that anywhere in these rules where it mentions, references the township committee, that, that's changed the township.
Yeah, we'll change that to council or governing body. Not a problem.
Good catch. Yep.
Brilliant minds think alike, Paul.
Yeah. Yeah. This started before then. Okay, so there's no other comments or questions? Andy, you'll make the changes, the adjustments and you'll share it with us?
Yes.
And then, and then what's the mechanism for getting it to council?
Well, that, these are our, your, the, these are our bylaws. So, I mean, we could. I mean, they're not, I mean, I could, we'll, we'll send the, make sure the, maybe through Eileen, like, you know, that, that the clerk and or the. Manager has them, but I think the rule, the, the rules, not the, the, uh, the annual report has to be submitted to the. You know, township clerk. These are our own bylaws we're talking about.
All right. Well, I like the rules and, uh, I would request that once you got it all cleaned up, we look at it one last time. And we forward it to the township manager and share it with the, uh, all, everyone.
Yep.
Involved.
Okay. Okay.
Would we need to officially adopt it? By, by a motion and a vote?
We do.
Okay.
Okay, good. All right, Mr. Bear. So you've got your work cut out for you. Then the next one is the, um, yearly review and report. Now, there were two documents.
Yep.
What was the purpose of two documents attached?
Well, I, I did a red line and a clean. So the red, so I, I, I just did a red line so you could show what was deleted, see what was deleted and see what was added.
Okay, good. I'm going through the red line.
Yeah. And this came about for the be- benefit of the public and the remainder of the board, uh, of the board members. From our, our rules committee, uh, meeting, um, or ended, you know. We, we went through the annual report to present to the board for consideration.
Oh, I see. You added the July nine, twenty twenty one, right? The Governor Murphy and the. Electric vehicle charging stations from last year, right?
So, yeah, so I, so I, I cleaned up a little the language on the virtual hearings without reference to COVID or pandemic. Uh. In, in regard to electric vehicle charging stations. Um, we, uh, a- a- added something that said. Which we should work, cause I think there's, could be a, right? And this is more, I think Charlie brought this up, but. We had a, we said, we should include a provision requiring. we had a, we said which should include a provision requiring the installation of the equipment. By the time the C C of O is issued as opposed to phasing it over time. Because it's it's gonna be um difficult for the townships uh zoning and code people to follow, make sure that they're actually installed if it's installed over many years. This way, if it's all installed up front, right, Charlie, that's something we talk.
Yeah, yeah, the current law gives you uh, if you have a requirement of six, you're allowed to do two of them, one third with, you know, at time of CL, the next two, you know, two years later, and then the next two, another two years later. So it just creates a burden for our township, uh, you know, uh, construction and code enforcement to make sure that those things get put in. So we require it all to be installed upfront with the site plan. It just, you know, makes it cleaner for everyone.
The next. Nope, sorry, go ahead, Paul.
No, so I'm looking at, you added additional definitions for distribution center and fulfillment center. They're both to be considered and developed as warehouse type uses are expanding into different kinds of operations, partly due to internet shopping by consumers.
What paragraph are you in?
Five.
Yes, this is, this ca- this was, this was in last year's report.
Okay.
That's no change. That was in last year's report and it's a carryover. Um, we did, I did, we did delete the reference to recommending the adoption of flex space and incorporating a parking standard because the township council, the mayor council did that last year.
Got it.
So we, I, that's the red line we took out. Um, the paragraph six no changes, paragraph from last year. Paragraph seven relates to accessory structures and then Jen had recommended if the, like, if a shed is greater than ten feet, then the setback requirement should be equal to the height. So that's an addition in pa- in in connection with accessory structures.
And this, and the size of it, right, three hundred to four hundred?
Yeah, and increase the size to four hundred square feet.
Correct. And then uh on lighting, we changed the uh
Color temperature.
Yeah, in paragraph eight from uh lighting intensity should be not be greater than four hundred Kelvin. It was at three hundred Kelvin.
Four thousand.
Four thousand, sorry, yeah. Missed a zero there. That came from Charlie.
You don't want that with money, though, Andy. More zeros better.
This is true. Uh, we took out the deletion to the stormwater uh regulations, cause those have been adopted.
Yep.
Recommendation. And that was it.
Mr. Bear, can we go back to paragraph five? If you can, under.
Uh, three, four.
The last paragraph of 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 section five, under under additional definitions for distribution center and fulfillment center. Didn't the town uh pass an ordinance um eliminating fulfillment centers?
Yes.
So should we, is this paragraph as written? Okay, or do we want to change that?
Can you read the sentence to me? I apologize.
Yeah, Jen, it reads additional, it reads additional definitions for distribution center in quotes and fulfillment center in quotes are to be considered and developed as warehouse type uses.
We did that. You could take that out.
Okay. So that will be deleted as well.
The only other thing that I didn't hear is um, which we're gonna keep is to revise not only the the color temperature, but to revise the lighting ordinance to the current standards, which typically is the IES. Every single application that comes before both us and the planning board gets relief from our current lighting ordinance, which tells me is not a good ordinance if we're constantly giving relief from it. And the standard that Shari usually accepts uh at both boards is the IES standard. But I think the language in the report that says current standard is better because if the current standard changes from IES, then we're not in a position to have to go back and consist consistently change it. Um, but what's there now with respect to like the max, the min and the average on the foot candles? I haven't seen in all the years I've been here, one single application that complies.
Would that be uh Jen reflect current industry standards? Is that?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, just this wasn't read it, but he has it in there.
Yeah, cause that was in there from last year, James, so there wasn't a change.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up because it's been a consistent issue and that's something that I think we really need to push.
Yeah, the ordinance should be revised to reflect current industry standards, including LED lighting.
Yes.
And then the next sentence changed to three thousand to four thousand Kelvin. And Charlie or Jen, do you have anything else? Cause these are really your uh.
I do not.
Okay. Paul, before we, uh, there was one more thing. I believe we did discuss the tree ordinance replacement fund.
Yeah, increasing the cost. Thirty-five thousand, from thirty-five thousand dollars per developed acre to forty-five thousand dollars per developed acre. And also the cost per tree, which I think is what, Charlie, two hundred fifty dollars now?
This is something that Rich and I worked on together with the Shade Tree Commission in the spring of twenty twenty when we met with um Mr. Cuchero and we we discussed um you know, some some of these changes. So with these now being included in this document, are we do uh assume that the 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 council may take this up by ordinance to change this?
That's the goal. I mean, that's the whole goal of the report. I mean, as you can see, there are definitely things that have been in the report for prior years that are still there because there hasn't hasn't happened yet. But I can tell you that in with with respect to the tree stuff, Shari had said there was one particular application where if they had had to inventory the trees, you know, take a survey and do a sample, the the payment will be like nine million. And to do the thirty-five thousand per developed acre, the cost was two million, so we left like seven million dollars on the table. So even increasing it to forty-five thousand, I think is leaving money on the table, but I, it's a but it's a good start. Um, so I I I'm hopeful that that's something that we do sooner than later. Especially considering we have a lot of large applications coming down the pipeline soon.
I agree. Thank you for that explanation.
Does the township started the process to look at that, Mark, or the council? Or where has that gotten?
I don't think it it's gotten past where we're discussing about it. I mean, we did mention it from the shade tree was our recommendation, but I think it was just put aside and I think it's gotta get moving along now.
I think historically, if you go back, Paul, you probably would remember this. Is, you know, and this is going back pre-COVID and and then some at the beginning of the of the following year, like, so it'll be the beginning of twenty-three. Uh, a rep from the zoning board, it historically has been the chair or somebody else has gone to the governing body to present the report to them. You know, instead of just sending it to them, it was kind of like a presentation to them. So there's a conversation, understanding of like what we're thinking and why we're making these comments. Um, I think that would help to get a good sense on whether or not there's even an interest in pursuing some of these comments uh moving forward.
Maybe we can get a group together to go make that presentation and would look better if we're several of us than one and and get it on their calendar so that we're we have a specific date to do that.
Yeah, I think.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea, cause out of out of sight, out of mind.
And then we'll have Mr. Aguilar there, too.
Another night out for you.
Alright, so, Mr. Bear, you got that also? You're gonna clean it up?
The only change I need to make is it it from what was supplied was uh deleting a paragraph on the distribution centers and fulfillment centers and and then I I'll accept all changes from the red line and then send it around, so, yeah.
Okay, wow.
Are you looking for us to take action on that tonight, or did you wanna clean it up and we'll come back to it one more time?
Without, whatever the board's preferences. Either way, I mean, the the document is the only change from what was sent was the reference to deleting the recommendation regarding distribution and fulfillment centers.
Well, if if the Rules Committee and with council have developed those and agreed to it, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I I don't, I I think we could vote on it now.
You wanna vote on it now? That's the pleasure of the board. Um, alright, so what are we working on first? The uh Rules Committee. With the amended changes, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes from the Rules Committee.
I'll second that.
Mystic Martins, Mr. Hughes. Okay. Eileen? Rules Committee.
Mr. Cancer.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes, and I implore our professionals to please explore hybrid and look into a chat feature for the public.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes, with Mr. Bear's edits, of course.
Well, will do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Okay, next is the annual report. Do we have a motion on the annual report?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hughes.
And I'll second it.
The cancer seconds it.
I'll give it to Mr. Roscoe.
I'll give it to Mr. Roscoe, Jose. Eileen, can we have a uh?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes. Okay, so we have conducted all of the business, I think, of the board. And um, you know, I think we all need to give each other an applause and a pat on the back for a great year. We got through it. Um, I appreciate everybody's support. And uh, you know, I'm hoping forward to seeing everyone next year. One way or another, uh, just be safe during this holiday season. And uh, I think the reorganization meeting will be uh January ninth, is that correct, Eileen?
Yes.
Um, let me double check. Yes.
Alright, and that's based on the meeting dates we agreed upon, correct?
Yes.
Alright, well, I'm looking forward to to that. So with that being said, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn and enjoy the rest of the.
Before we adjourn, before we adjourn, I wanna say thank you, gentlemen and lady for being with me all these years. Uh, it was a pleasure. And uh, it's a great, it's a great committee, I tell you. And um I had fun. So enjoy. You'll get another person in my spot, so take care. Happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Yeah, thank you for your service, Mr. Moretti.
Thank you, Mr. Moretti.
Thank you, Mr. Moretti.
You're all welcome. You're all welcome.
Okay, so you know, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
I'll second. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Had a great day.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Happy birthday, Charlie. Go have fun, man.
Thank you. Thank you for all you did.
Take care, everyone.